Okay, good morning, everybody. Happy Tuesday. Apologies for a late start. We do have a fifth council member in the back on her way out, and I think that will be where we stay for a minute. So I'd like to call to order the November 12th, 2024 work session of the Anorrendo County Council. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. We're going to start this morning with two presentations, the first being from Chief Wolford from the Fire Department. And I believe there are presentation, you have a presentation that's going to pull up on our screens.
Oh, you want me to use that one?
Good morning, how is everyone?
Good morning, thank you so much for being with us today.
Thanks for having me.
When you are ready, you may begin.
For those of you that went to fire ops, I hope you had a good time cutting things.
It was fantastic.
Learning medical skills.
Did you go again?
I did.
Wow. About the first time?
You would have been proud. They did well.
Good.
And the EMS portion, which was different from what we did in 2018, was phenomenal.
Good.
Yeah, it was very, it told a very, very serious story.
Clear story.
Yep.
Well, that'll be a perfect segue. Again, thank you for the invitation. My name is Tricia Wolford, I'm the Fire Chief for Anorrendo County, and how do I go full present on this? I don't know, this is, sorry, this is not my computer, so I don't, you can just put it in present mode. Or like that, that's fine, yeah, we can do that, that'll work, thank you. So Councilwoman Pickard invited me months ago to talk about staffing and what things would look like for the future of the Fire Department. One of the biggest things that we started with, just to give you a little background, is one of, part of our union negotiations that we do every year is a standards of cover document. So in last year's union negotiation, we decided to do a standards of cover document, which we contracted with an outside company. We expect that document to be here in a couple months. The purpose of that document does show and say where resources are needed within the county. It assesses everything within the county, it's been a months and months long project. So we are expecting that document to be here by January or February. The great thing about that is it is one conversation. It keeps us very narrowly focused where we don't have to have multiple conversations depending on who is having the conversation. It is kind of the end all be all that will give us a little bit of the history. So I did put together what we have been using over the last five years of how we've been trying to particularly ask for resources and what we need. So that's why the disclaimer is up there on the first page of, this is all pre-standards of cover document, and that we do expect that this plan is somewhat similar, but this plan doesn't prioritize, and standards of cover will help us prioritize our needs. So a little visual here to understand our staffing factor, which this kind of always jams up people's brains, and when you look at the note down at the bottom, it says 5.2 people fill one position. So if currently we have three people on a fire engine and we want to fill that fourth seat, it takes us 5.2 people, and that means it takes us the four, because we are a four-shift platoon and we work 24/72, and then we have to allot for the amount of vacation times, sick time that is allocated with every member, and that is the staffing factor of the 1.2. So just a little visual to understand when we talk about positions versus people, and why that number is sometimes jarring to see when we're talking about just a couple of positions, but it is a lot of people. So I'll run through, it's a very basic, I specifically took this out of our working spreadsheet so you could just see that what we've been working with, and we're just grouped, and then we can go through any questions you have. So we have our battalion chiefs listed here, and again, this is the first time that you can see the staffing factor come up, where we need one battalion chief, and that would be 5.2 people. Obviously, you can't do a point two, so we're looking for five, but we know when we're doing multiple seats, that point two starts to add up, and then we do have to add in another person to balance that out when we're doing a larger group. Chief saves are something that we've discussed previously over the years, and this is based on the duties that the battalion chief has when they're responding. This is somebody that drives the vehicle, so it's safer, they operate the command post, they operate all the technology, why the chief can actually have eyes on the incident. This is normally a lower ranking officer, usually a lieutenant or a captain, and at times, if it's a senior firefighter, then it has also been a firefighter grade position. Our EMS resources, right now, you see Medic 18B, this is a daywork unit, we definitely have the data that supports bringing it to a 24-hour unit, and you can see the comments where it says enhancement, these would be additional upgrades to add ambulances, so anytime you see an A, that's an ambulance. This would be in, the ambulance 59 would be in the Wauchapel area, as you know, Two Rivers, those communities have just created a tremendous call volume. And then Station 26, which is Glen Burnie, they actually run a lot into that Wauchapel area, and of course, are very busy going north and south. Part of what we have agreed to with our union is to be increasing our EMS officers, so we currently have three 24-hour EMS officers. We have four battalions, we like one per battalion. This is an officer that goes on high-profile calls, they run around the county checking on the hospitals, making sure that beds are moving, they also carry all the drugs and narcotics to refresh our medic units, so when they need supplies, those units don't have to come out of service or leave their area, we just have one vehicle moving around the county. So that would be the increase there. And you can see then just EMS overall, the staffing factor that we're looking at. Now, when it says minus the daywork staffing, that's because we currently have some folks on there, so that's what adjusts it. We have two on daywork, so we would need then two additional. Special service units are basically our heavy rescue apparatus, so it's everything but an engine, that would be the trucks, the squads, the towers, and you'll see there's some notes in there about what that complement is and what we need. These are projections that I am hoping the standards of cover document explains in a better way of when we have to do what we call a double house, and that means, right now, we will have a truck and an engine in a fire station, but we only have staffing for one. So based on the call, they have to go on one or the other. And what we're seeing is that we're really not saving, and the data is supporting that we are staffed with two, so a crew for the truck and a crew for the engine, because obviously having two resources going out instead of the one. So that's when you see the word independently versus dependently staffed. So these are stating that at Wauchapel, Tower 5, whether that's independently or dependently staffed, meaning it has its own crew, or it has to rely on whether or not the engine crew is back and can actually get on the tower to run the call. This is why people say, "We see you're always at the firehouse." Well, no, the apparatus is sitting at the firehouse, but the crew is out on a different piece. There's also fireboat staffing, and we really don't have a lot of data on that, so we're looking forward to the document to be able to give us some data on what fireboat staffing looks like with the two boats coming in. Safety officers and tanker drivers, and again, these are just coupled for space on the page, they don't necessarily correlate, but just in the interest of your time. Safety officers function just as EMS officers, but in terms of making sure the scene is safe, they're providing decon, they're providing any type of reporting that needs to be done, things along those lines, and again, normally, safety officers correlate with battalions just as EMS officers do. So this would be one additional. They also do a lot within the Health and Safety Office for the members based on medicals, physicals, those types of things, and follow-ups, so it's also a staff position. Tanker driver, we continue to have this conversation, and those are the priorities listed for if we were to do a full-time tanker driver. Tankers are the only piece of apparatus that have one driver, and that is obviously because they get the piece there, and then they pump and shuttle water. So 10, which Councilman Volkey is up in your area, and then we would be in Westonapolis, and then the third priority would be in Crownsville, the new station that is being built off of Sunrise Beach. This is the biggest piece of the engines and trucks for staffing. Again, when I got here almost six years ago, we had pieces of apparatus going out with two. Thankfully, we've been grateful enough with all of your work, with the county executive's work, with the budget office, to be able to move to three. National standards is four, that goes on these two pieces of apparatus. So that's a big number down in the right corner, you know, 29 seats, that seems like, oh, that's right, that's pretty easy, and then you see, that's 150 people. So I understand the numbers can be jarring. Again, what we're hoping with the standards of cover document is it starts to piecemeal where we can build a multi-year plan, and all of this is the goal, to build a multi-year plan, to say, you know what, it's going to be these two stations out of each district or each battalion, so that we have a better idea. I truly believe everything that we're telling you is the conservative number and is a true number, but I'm excited to be able to tell you what that looks like and how we can build that multi-year plan. And then this is our last piece here, fire inspectors, we can send, their workload just continues to go up and up, and part of this is with the standards of cover document, in the 24 hours, we'll be able to talk about exactly what a day in the life of 24 hours of what a firefighter is required to do. Part of it right now is the fire inspections live within the crews in the field, and they're going out and inspecting buildings. The time and how many more businesses that we have and areas that we have to inspect has just skyrocketed, so we know that we probably need to be bringing in more inspectors to be doing office daywork, that would be those inspections to pull that away from the crews in the field. So this is the projection we're looking at for that. We haven't really looked into this, this isn't a conversation we've had before, so these are new numbers, and again, something that the consultant brought to us and said, "You really need to be looking at this." And then with the growth of everyone in the field and what those numbers look like, we obviously project that we'll need more staff assistance internally. We're over 1,000 sworn firefighters, along with the rest of the support staff, so we know that number's going to increase. So again, just kind of a quick shot of, you know, what we're looking at. My goal is to be able to provide you all with a multi-year plan, something that is anywhere from three to six years, just as we have done with apparatus, I feel like we've always had good success with that, we've stayed right on par. When we've made changeouts from year to year, it's been with good conversation to say, "Okay, we can't do this year, but let's flip it and try it next year." So that would be the overall goal, once we get that document, and my hope is that I'd be able to come back and present the standards of cover document and share that with everyone once you all have the draft and are able to read through. Available for any questions, anything I can answer.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Hi, good morning. I'm going to follow up with the question that I asked you by email, but I'm going to give you a chance, if you want, to share it with everybody, and also to sort of elaborate on it. So I did the math on the positions, and based on this, which I understand is a preliminary document, we're looking at somewhere around 348 more FTE positions that we would need for the fire service. And I know you're saying to me, "We don't know yet, that might not be the plan, we might tweak things," I get that, but for years, you and I have talked about, "What are we targeting for, right? What's that number that we think is the right number? Are we getting close to knowing what maybe that number is now, where we say, you're 1,000 sworn plus another 348, maybe we're like 1,350, 1,400 people in the fire service, and that puts us at a staffing level that we feel comfortable with?" Can you answer that?
Yes, I can answer it. I think the problem that I always have maybe conveying is, the community is so fluid with the needs, based on the call volume, based on how many people decide to live and work here, that there is never a pinnacle of a number we will get to. We will never be like, "We're going to be 1,500 members and we're going to be good to go."
Okay.
So that's always the moving target, and to me, that's the beauty of having a multi-year plan, because we have to adjust to the community.
Yeah.
When Two Rivers came in, and, you know, I just use that to talk about a very big general area, for us, that is like Wauchapel and Anorrendo, we didn't know what the impacts were going to be. So as we start gathering data for when these communities are built, then we start to get a better idea.
Yeah.
Do I think the number in the 300s over a couple of years is an appropriate number? Absolutely.
Okay.
Because we do see the growth with that, and we do see, based on national standards, that we haven't met our minimum staffing. So I think probably the biggest change for us is going to be independent versus dependent staffing and what that looks like, but some firehouses don't need that. So to answer your question, there will never be a number, but I think we can close the gap, and if we can close the gap within 10% to 15% of where we think we need to be, I think that would be great.
It's a good maybe, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I guess following up to Mr. Volkey's question, does this model include some growth, or anticipate some growth in the county, or is this based on, you know, sort of current call volume and current needs?
Right now, it's, what the consultant is doing for us is based on our current needs, because what we have asked for is what is not being met, or where can we be more efficient? And that was really what I wanted to know, because it will also tell us if we need to be shifting resources, and we could be more efficient using things in different ways. So it'll show trending with the data of possible projections, but we're planning for current and what the next couple of years looks like.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, looking at this and understanding that we're a combined system with volunteer and career members, how do the volunteers play into this staffing model, if at all?
They won't play into the staffing model based on the standards of cover document.
Okay.
That's always been an enhancement to the system, and as you know, we've had the conversation, it's because I can't schedule that, so we can't factor it in. It's certainly a needed and a wanted asset, if we can have that, and that's when I talk about the shifting of the model, if that is a consistent player in one station versus another, then we know we can shift the resources and know, okay, we don't need it here, we can use it over here instead. But the document doesn't take that into account for a full staffing factor.
And just following up on that, you and I have had these conversations for five, six years now about the ability to schedule volunteers. So has there been a conversation with the Volunteer Association or with any of the companies about the ability for you as the Fire Chief to say, "Can I get a minimum staffing commitment from the volunteer contingent so that I can build that into the plan?" What if any discussions or conversation has happened with that? Is there anything there?
We've had tons of conversation.
Okay.
And I think the leaders of those volunteer organizations would love to have that commitment from their members. I think they feel the same way as presidents and volunteer chiefs.
Yeah.
They would love for their members to be there and to make a Tuesday night commitment, a Thursday commitment, so they can't even get the nights and the weekends commitment from their own members, and that's not even with me pressing on that, that's them wanting that for their corporation.
Okay.
But then we really get into the daywork times, and that's where the struggle is, because everybody's got at least one job, if not two, and...
We feel that.
Childcare and families, and...
Yeah.
So there is always the want, it's just incredibly difficult with the time.
May I ask another follow-up?
You may.
Thank you. So again, following into this thing, these discussions you and I have had, because we're talking about this kind of publicly for the first time, is there any discussion from the county side about looking at additional benefits that could be offered to volunteer members to incentivize them to commit to a minimum level of staffing, whether that be access to the health insurance pool, so that they can get health insurance as part of the group plan that we have in the county, or something that would even be like a stipend or something in the short term? Because obviously, the low sap credit is something that after 25 years, for a volunteer firefighter, can be very attractive, but you've got to wait 25 years, and it doesn't do anything for a county that has a high amount of people who are sort of moving through for work, or for deployments, or for, you know, other reasons that they're here and then they're in and out. Is there anything that we could do like that in the short term that would incentivize people who want to volunteer to say, "All right, that's a good benefit, I am willing to commit to a minimum level of staffing to do that"?
We have had the conversation in the past, I think we've even pushed the conversation, and you and I have talked about this, of what it would look like for paid-on-call, which is a popular model across the country, that you're just paid for the time you're there, or you're paid to be on-call, as stated. But again, then you're not a volunteer, and now you are an employee. So I think some of the benefits that we discuss really, that they fall into an employment world, that would be a greater conversation at the county level with the Office of Personnel, what do retirement benefits look like, you've talked about health insurance, those types of things. The other thing to consider is recruitment across the country for career and volunteer is plummeted, and it is incredibly difficult to make, I would say, younger generations understand the value of health insurance, retirement benefits, those aren't seen as perks, and it is just the way it is. So I wonder if we were to even approach and get to a point that we are capable of doing that, what, that would be considered as a recruitment tool, or if that would be considered a recruitment tool. I know the companies themselves with their volunteer boards and the corporations have been able to do other types of incentives, but they're saying even that hasn't kept folks there. So it's a difficult age group to recruit to when there's so many other interesting things that they could be doing or want to be doing, not to mention the amount of training that it takes to stay relevant, so.
Ms. Feidler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to follow up on the line of questions with regards to volunteers and enhancements. Do we have an annual or semi-regular report on the enhancements that are provided, just to see if there's regular ebbs and flows, if there's a significant drop, if there's an increase, any kind of...
The annual report is online.
Perfect.
It does show the call volume, and it does show breakdown, I'd have to go back and look, I haven't looked at it in a while, but you can see, I mean, we can run the data at any time to see which pieces are volunteer, which pieces are career-staffed, and how many calls they ran. So it's very easy data to collect, if you ever wanted any of that information, and we, you know, you could see, and most likely, if calls are being run, it's nights and weekends because of daywork job responsibilities and things along that lines, and then you can see which volunteer companies are running more calls. And again, on a volunteer standpoint, especially when it comes to EMS calls, it's highly beneficial because of the EMS billing system and the reimbursement system that is allotted to them. So there is, when you talk about having Councilman Volkey one benefit, monetarily, that's a huge benefit to the company, to be regaining money for EMS transport when you're a volunteer company. When you're a career, you all see that money in the EMS billing, you know, that's the $23 million that we bring back to the county.
Yep.
You know, the Fire Department making revenue, 23 million, yes. Just for memory's sake, when I got here, it was 7 million, now we're at 23 million.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Just a tiny reminder.
Of course. Just one more question on, I can't tell which slide this is, but you had Medic 18B upgrade to 24/7?
Yes, let's see.
Are there any other stations or medics or rescue that are not 24/7 at this point?
At this point, no, and part of what we did last year with our budget allocation and with our staffing enhancements was, we had others, and they did get upgraded. Station 23 on Ritchie Highway, that one did. So again, it's just the slow progression of trying to get things where they need to be, and we start with putting these in in daywork models, one, to see if the data supports it, and two, because we already see a need, and then we go, "Okay, well, which one should we do first?" And Jones Station needed to go 24/7 first, so we're hoping this one will go. And this is the second one, there's already a one full-time, so there's 18A and B, so that just goes to show you how busy the Marley area is.
Thank you. Ms. Hammer.
How are we currently keeping up with filling the positions we have when it comes to retirements and things like that? So not to meant, you know, we're looking at adding more, but how are we doing it filling our current allotment?
Very good, excellent, I would say. Thanks to a lot of help with the Office of Personnel, we actually made some changes. So we used to do hiring every two years and hold a list for two years, we're now doing it annually, so we're, we'll be bringing in a class every February of '70, that takes care of our attrition. And the fact that we are doing it with a June testing and then the hiring really is helpful, again, we talk about the younger generation, the attention span, the being able to move as quickly as possible. So actually, Office of Personnel, that team, Anne has been a great partner, we've been able to look at areas where we can condense the hiring process to move that along. So we are full, our staffing is full, and we actually talk about that a lot to our members, to say, you know, the times when it doesn't feel full is because we either have a lot of sick calls or things along, you know, with personal emergencies, but otherwise, promotions when people are retiring are happening within 30 days, so you just have to wait till the, you know, the first of the next month. But very good, very happy on that end.
At one point, we, I knew the statistics about fire calls, basic life support calls, advanced life support calls, do you have sort of a general breakdown of the service we're providing in the county?
So about 83%, and I'll get you the updated numbers, I don't want to misquote that, because I don't have the breakdown between advanced ALS versus basic BLS, so I can follow up and get you that. But, so we've always been anywhere between about 78% to 83% medical calls, and then everything else is considered service calls or suppression calls, and that could be anything from motor vehicle accidents, structure fires, hazmat calls, any of our water emergencies, those types of things. So there is a little bit of another category. That breakdown from last year is on the county website in our annual report, there's some really clear graphics that show the breakdowns from year to year, so all the annual reports have that, but I'll get you the most updated.
The general numbers, that was fine, I just wanted to make sure those were in the same category. I'm curious, not just with public safety, but the effect of the changing demographics in the county and what that looks like for EMS as our community ages, what that's going to, what kind of pressure that's going to put on certain services. Can you also, for my sake and council's sake, but also any public, can you give us an update on, I'm going to get it wrong, the combination program, trying to cut down on recidivism rates, the MIHU or MI?
Oh, the Mobile Integrated Community Health?
Yes.
Yes, great program, fantastic program. For those of you that may not remember, this is a program that we do with the Department of Aging. So it began with what we consider high utilizers of the 911 system, and we had just under about 100 high utilizers, and these are folks that are calling multiple times in a month, with maybe low acuity, their needs are very low but consistent, so we put together this team of daywork folks that is paramedics and EMTs, and then also with the Department of Aging, who are fantastic partners, we also have a nurse, and then a social worker. And I just actually recently went on a ride-along with them, and they take those high utilizers, and we actually schedule appointments and go out during the day to try to limit the use of the 911 system when it is non-emergent. One that helps in the field with our firefighters and paramedics, so they don't get desensitized, we see that where they see an address and they go, "Oh," right, "We know why we're going for this." And it also helps that we can actually get the community member the care that they need, and that is why we have the social worker and the nurse. So we just actually went the other day to a lovely woman's house, and we checked the medications, we make sure everything's right, the nurse can re-prescribe while they're there, social services worker is there, they reassess on the house to make sure cognitively she's still good to be living alone, and we visit once her And we visit once or twice a week. So we do this to numerous patients and have numerous customers, so it's a huge caseload. If there would be another slide, I would ask for another team to be able to go out and do that work because it's the best work for the community member. They don't have to get to a point where they feel like they need to call 911. And it gives them one-on-one communication and connection, which is what we find is actually what most people want and enjoy is somebody to talk to in their day. So it's been highly effective. Originally started with the assistance of both of our hospital systems, so Baltimore, Washington and Anarundel, and also some funding. We are seeing that we've had to pick up quite a bit of the funding ourselves. So we're continuing to try to work on that partnership. Still great partners and we know after COVID, everybody had to make huge money decisions. But it's definitely a program that will need to be, continue to be funded. And it has lowered the 911 repetitive call volume that we see. So it's highly effective and it is saving money is what we're seeing.
Excellent. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. That actually reminded me, I've had a longstanding question. So that program was initially set up, one of the regular calls you were seeing were folks who, you know, had fallen out of bed and were using 911 services. The program focuses on private residents. I have heard that a lot of those types of calls continue in the larger facilities. Has there been an effort to bridge that conversation with those larger owned companies that house folks who are aging and may or may not be living independently on utilizing the services? Is that something that you can even take on?
You're speaking about like our long-term care facilities or some of our nursing facilities?
Yeah, independent living, assisted living, those types.
Yes, and you are correct. Mobile integrated health deals with residential, non-corporations, independent, you know, singular housing. We do actually, when we first started doing the staffing plan, that was one of our greatest needs of putting our EMS officers back in the staffing plan, which you all helped with. When I got here, we added in too. And that was because we needed to help build the relationship with some of those nursing facilities and those corporations to say, you know, what's the call volume? What are we doing here? What are we calling for? What are you all capable of versus what are we all, you know, we capable of doing? Obviously, when you call 911, we're going to show up regardless. We know that. But we also think we can probably make those relationships better, which would probably potentially reduce the call volume or understand what the needs are before we're there. So, you know, we're not consistently behind, if that makes sense. So the EMS supervisors are a lot of times the main communication connection point and then they work with the battalion chiefs to be able to have that conversation. We haven't gotten anything in depth. I would say we're not in any core critical conversations with any of those facilities. But we do know that when the lines of communication are not open, it does become more challenging. And we do know that it is a high utilizer and there's no specific one area of the county. It is just a high utilizer business model.
Thank you.
Since we have you, can you give us an update on emergency room wait times and how that's affecting our fire service?
I don't have the most up-to-date. I know we've made vast improvements. The Assistant Chief, who is also the Chief of Operations, Larry Schultz, meets with the hospitals every week for years. It is one of the most committed relationships that even when you make the smallest moves and the smallest increases, it doesn't feel like you're making moves at all. Both hospital systems have done a tremendous job of making adjustments. Some at times do better than others. We know that obviously the hospitals suffer with staffing and having, you know, to staff all of their floors as necessary along with the ER. So we have put new protocols in place. There are times when we see a kind of flow back up and then we, you know, have to take a look at it again. I hate to harp on the EMS supervisors, but the work they do is tremendous. This is their other point of contact. They are constantly at the hospital, you know, making sure that somebody is there with the charge nurse or, you know, whoever with the floor manager is to be able to have a conversation to say, hey, you know, we've got five units here. We, you know, we need to get them moving so they can get back out in the community. So the wait times are certainly not as bad as they were post-COVID, but they could still be better. I will say, everybody is working very hard at it. And I know that's a really vague answer. I hate to kind of give that answer. We do know that for our clinicians, that is probably one of the most deterring factors of being a medical clinician. It's really hard to know you have the skills to do good things out in the field and you're stuck in the hospital for hours at a time. I personally experienced, I know how frustrating it is, so we're trying to do our best. Probably the most frustrating thing as an executive staff is we can't control another business. I can't control the hospitals. So you try to remain good partners and, you know, keep cool and think of things to do. But I will say the hospitals are working hard.
Thank you. We good?
But it could always be better.
Well, I do know, I do know that it's an all hands on deck situation with the hospitals and emergency. It's not just affecting our ambulance wait times. It's affecting lots of aspects of.
And for our community members, a lot of it is us as clinicians in the field when we're getting ready to transport a patient is to really have a very clear conversations about, one, what the wait terms are and two, what it means to be diverted or to go to another hospital. You know, if you live right here in Westonapolis and you go, well, my doctors are at Anarundel and Anarundel's on a four-hour wait. And we say, we can take you up to Baltimore, Washington and Glen Burnie and it's only a two-hour wait. We need to be able to explain why that is. And we also have the information on hand in our units to be able to explain, you know, you have a cardiac emergency, there's no cardiac beds available at this hospital, you know, we have to take you to doctor's hospital, which is where there is a cardiac bed available or whatever the hospital layout, you know, we have to go to Harbor because you need this type of care. So there, none of that is by chance, right? Everything in the system when it comes to the EMS side, based on the medical complaint, has a fluid movement. Because there are some places that we can't take you and depending on the severity, we know it's a four-hour wait, but this is the closest facility and our protocols say we have to go here based on your emergency. So I think the clinicians do a really good job to explain all of that when there is time. Sometimes it is emergent and they just got to go and then they explain once they get there, which I think that can be frustrating because the average person thankfully doesn't visit the ER. So they don't know that you could come by ambulance and still go to the waiting room and still have to wait six hours because there's other high acuity calls ahead of you. So it's not an easy conversation, but it is the reality of our medical system.
Well, this has been incredibly helpful. So thank you very much for your time this morning.
Absolutely.
I think we're, I think we're good. So thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to coming back and sharing the standards of cover document with you.
When do you think that will be?
We're looking probably early February. And that'll give the department time to review it and read through it and share with our stakeholders. And then once that's finalized, then we'll be able to start working on building a multi-year plan.
Fantastic. We'll have to look ahead to a work session and have you come back because it is, it's a lot easier to have it explained from the expert in the room. Appreciate your time this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We're going to transition to our next presentation, which is an update on the Crownsville Hospital Memorial Park Master Plan. Mr. Trumbauer and Ms. Dyer are here and maybe with some others. So we'll let this transition happen and we'll move forward.
All right, welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
I am Chris Trumbauer. I'm your Budget Officer, but I'm here today as the Chair of the Crownsville Advisory Committee. I'm joined by an esteemed panel. We've got Hannah Dyer, our Assistant Chief Administrative Officer, who is serving as the lead staff for the committee. We've got Susan Harold, who's our Central Services Officer and can answer questions about the existing facilities. And we've got Mike Stroud, who is an A-plus Gold Star, five out of five Yelp review, project review or project manager for Crownsville. So you've got the A-team here today. We've got a presentation that I'm going to zip through at Mach 3 for you so that we can get to any questions that you may have. But it's designed to give you a brief overview of the draft master plan, which is open for public comment now through November 24th. So you all have your time to get in your official comments to help influence the final draft. Okay? Moving right along. Here's just a brief kind of pre-history. The facility closed in 2004. The state put it on the clearinghouse process, which is what they do to surplus it. We submitted a letter of interest. Lo and behold, the Board of Public Works voted to give it to Anarundel County for discount price of, I believe it was $1, which we paid with one roll of 100 pennies. And then we took possession officially on December 13th of 2022 is when we got the deed. So that whole process took a long time. And then we had a very deliberate effort to set up the public engagement process and that started with Executive Order 61, which established the Crownsville Advisory Committee. Here is a timeline that I won't go through in detail, but I just wanted to show you that there has been a long and very involved and I think impressive stakeholder and public engagement phase to this, which is culminating at least in the short term with the public comments on the draft master plan. Okay, so before we get into some of the nuts and bolts of the draft plan, I did want to make sure we're all familiar with the guiding principles. You've probably heard the county executive or the committee lay these out, but basically we want to honor the history of the site. We want to make it a place of healing and we also want to preserve the environmental features that are there as it stands now. All right, getting into the site plan. So what you can see on the screen and if you're, if you have the document in front of you is the overview. What I want to detail on this slide is the little text boxes show the different components of the site, right? So at the very top, there's North Campus. At the very bottom, there's South Forest. Each of these components has a little section in the draft master plan that you can read about some potential ideas or assessment of that area. We obviously don't have time to go through that in detail today, but I did want to point out that there's a wealth of information in the master plan for each of these components. This is the preliminary recommendations for the existing structures. You can see there's a lot of them, almost 80. Many of them are in a state of disarray and some of them are practically demolished as it is, but some of these obviously will need to be cleared out. Many of the larger structural buildings can be repurposed. And then there's some that we're recommending to be mothballed at this time just because we think that there will be some future value, but we might not have an immediate use to invest resources in at this time. But we want to preserve them so that their condition doesn't deteriorate. All right, so now we're going to walk through a couple of those component sections just to give you a flavor. The first one, this is North Campus. So this is where Fairfield Loop Road and General's Highway kind of come in where Crownsville Road is. What's in the draft master plan is just a concept and that's a new entrance. And we're envisioning that there could be a circle there to improve traffic patterns and have a more welcoming entrance into the site. This is not an engineered drawing. This is just a concept. We don't know if this will come to fruition, but it's one idea to kind of enhance that entrance to the site. And we thought it was important to make everybody familiar with that. The campus core, you can see from the picture, this is kind of that main area. You can see the backside of the large administration buildings and some of the more larger facilities. We're envisioning here a little bit of a gathering space with a small pavilion, but mostly just open space. You can see also the different walkways to connect various buildings. And then at the lower right-hand corner, that's the parade route, we're calling it, but that was there in history. There was a parade grounds and a route there that we're kind of envisioning re-establishing to connect that area. The administration complex are the, kind of the suite of the large buildings that look like, you know, college campus buildings with the big pillars and everything. So we're proposing some reuses there. Again, this is just a concept, but we envision that there would be a museum and space for racial hearing. We've also partnered with Bowie State University and we can foresee them having some of that space. And then there could be other space in there as well for makerspace and artist studios and things like that. Again, nothing has been decided, nothing has been designed. These are just concept plans to show how that space could be utilized. East Campus is on the east side of Crownsville Road. That's where the Hope House is. We're envisioning that we would relocate the food bank over to the site of the old cafeteria building, which is in terrible shape, but that would be demolished. And we're in preliminary negotiations with the food bank to see how that would work. But it's largely forested, that area, there is the super, old superintendent's residence up to the north, which we don't have an intended use for yet, but it's structurally okay. So we're recommending mothballing that at this time. Active recreation is an important part of not only our plan, but also the history of the site. So the building that you can see in this slide in the middle is the Campanella Building. That was a recreation building. We're envisioning keeping that use. Also, there are existing athletic fields on the site that are utilized to this day. We'd like to enhance and continue those uses. And then a recent idea that came from our subcommittee work was adding a walking or running track that would be useful not only for behavioral health folks that were maybe on the grounds and looking for somewhere to walk, but also most of our running facilities in the county are associated with our school facilities and they're not open to the general public all the time. I will tell you personally, I wasn't aware of the demand for a walking facility like this, but it's extraordinary. We got a lot of public comments and it was one of the things when we had our public meeting a couple of weeks ago that several stakeholders spoke up very compellingly about. So there is a walking track, walking, running track in the plan. South Campus is kind of the hidden area of the site. It's largely forested below the Meyer Building, but there are six structures that are in relatively good shape. We envision that those could be reutilized through some partnerships. One suggestion was working with organizations like the Boy Scouts or maybe some environmental organizations just because of the location there. It's kind of wooded. It's very kind of pleasant and quiet back there. And there could be some good usages of those former patient cottages. And then the big building, which we kind of call the hashtag building because that's what it looks like, a number tag, a number sign or a hashtag, that we're envisioning could be repurposed for an institutional use of some time, maybe transitional housing, maybe behavioral health use. But that is a structurally sound building and the way it's set up does lend itself to some beneficial uses. Another important component of the plan is this historic farmstead. So there is a large and long agricultural history on the site. We're envisioning some community gardens here and hopefully keep up the silo that's there and some of the other agricultural kind of themed elements. This is the West Park Meadow area and the existing site, you probably know, has a wastewater treatment facility that involves holding lagoons and sprayfields. Long-term project, but we're hoping that that will go away and there will be a more modern wastewater facility. And ultimately, we would like to create in this area a path of reverence that tells the story of the site, but also makes a viable connection to the patient cemetery, which is on the west side of Route 97. There is an existing overpass farm road. It's structurally sound. It's largely used for the heirs on the cemetery to get over there, but we do want to preserve that access and make it more open to the public. This is the West Park forested area that's kind of on the south side of the property. There are some stream corridors there. They're maybe not quite as pristine as this picture, but it's very nice back there and we do envision some hiker biker trails, unpaved trails as well as some that could be back there. And then here's a little bit more detailed on that path of reverence. It would be a nice kind of promenade, but have not only this direct route that would be accessible in times of need by vehicles, but also more winding paths that could be walked. And here's a little bit more about that that would have storyboards and lots of other historical and cultural. historical and cultural references. I know you guys probably want to know about the budget, so this is just a slide we threw in here. The capital budget funding is found in P.58840. That shows we've got about $35 million and change of total funding that has gone into that. The vast majority of that was the contribution from the state administration and General Assembly. That totals $30.5 million. We got that over the course of FY '23 and FY '24 state budgets. We also recently got a federal earmark, a little over $4 million, an extremely precise amount, which I don't know, that's unusual. But anyway, we got that for the natural trails work, and then we have $100,000 state grant for the cemetery memorial. So so far, we've spent less than 15% of that. If you have specific questions on what that spend has been or what we anticipate spending on, Mike is here to answer those. And then we do have some funding that we received in our operating budget. That goes into our Office of Planning and Zoning, and that is for the oral history project of telling the stories of some of the living folks that have worked and been a part of the hospital. All right. So just a final reminder that the public comment period is open. The draft master plan is extremely important. We've gotten a very positive and very robust response from the public and stakeholders so far. We expect that to continue for the next couple of weeks while it's open. And then here's the website. It's crownsville-park-comment@aacounty.org. There's also a webpage on the county site that has all this information and more. We'd encourage you, if you haven't yet, to go check that out, and if you have thoughts or comments, please submit them in your official capacity as council members. What happens after that public comment closes is the team will be evaluating all of those, kind of categorizing all the feedback. We're working on the committee level in our subcommittees to also put in comments on the plan. So we'll kind of look at all of what was submitted. We will digest that for a while, make tweaks, changes, enhancements, and then our hope is to be complete. End of the year is our aspirational goal, but we think it's much more important than get this right than it is to meet an arbitrary deadline, so we're calling that a soft deadline of the end of the year. We would like to have the final master plan complete, but it's a lot of work, and if it has to bleed over a little bit, we're okay with that. Again, we want to get it right. So with that, I will stop talking, thankfully, and I'll open questions up to our panel of experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the slides. Those look different than what is online, a little more in-depth, I think. Am I right?
Well, so, council member, the entire draft master plan is online. It's 91 pages or thereabouts, so this is just a subset of what's available there.
Okay. Perhaps I didn't get through the 91.
Well, you have to click on the link, but yeah, there's some pictures on the website. These ones are like the super pretty ones I grabbed, so.
Understood. So I am actually interested in the $5 million incurred to date. If we could go into just high level, you don't have to get into the nitty-gritty details.
Sure. A lot of that has just been front-end work to assess the current state of a lot of the infrastructure, but Mike, if you can give a little bit more detail to the council member, just press the talking person icon there.
There we go. Yeah, most of the $5 million, there was a lot when we started the master planning process that we knew we didn't have to wait for. We knew the water and wastewater, the utility systems, the electrical systems. We could start on those a year plus ago, prior to the master plan. So the majority of that $5 million is the master planning funds for that, and then also some civil design for the water and wastewater and the electrical utilities, the stuff that we knew we could get started on ahead of time before the master plan.
Perfect. Thank you. May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
The recreation facility, is that to be renovated? It will stay in place?
Yeah, the condition of that facility, I would classify as a non-expert as poor, but it is.
I would agree.
Yeah. Anybody who's been in there, it's a bit of a mess. So to be perfectly candid, I'm not going to tell you 100% that we would be able to renovate that existing building versus kind of replace it with something similar. I think that work still needs to be done, but we feel important that we honor that space and that use because it was such an important part. And then, quite frankly, where it sits on the site itself lends itself, because it is next to some existing fields, and it's not too far away from the forested area, which would connect with some trails and things. So we think it's the perfect spot for that. Whether or not that existing building is salvageable, or whether we need to demolish it and rebuild something similar is still to be answered.
Thank you for that. I did, I think we all took a tour of the property many months ago, so I did not go into that particular structure. I saw it from afar. I would agree that it doesn't look so great from the outside, and I would assume that that would be a multi-purpose-use recreation facility inside.
Yeah, I think that, right. Again, with everything, there's no specific plan where we're, you know, we're not at that stage. We're kind of envisioning concepts, but yeah, it would be a recreational building that would have a lot of uses. We would try and tie it as much as possible to the site and the needs of the community there, but I think you're in the right direction.
And what is, if you don't mind me asking, what is the rough timeline for the project?
Okay. So when you say "the project," this is a generational project, right? If you're, so what we have, one of the things that came out of our initial view of the draft master plan was the need to kind of phase out some things, and so the consultant is working on now is adding to that draft master plan some timeline phases. I will tell you, and I'll invite the panel to weigh in as well, there are some things we can get started on quickly, the natural trails in the forest area, some of the recreational amenities. Maybe we can, you know, pick one building to concentrate and renovate to get a use if we want to do one of that. Moving the food bank over, I think those are things that can happen in the near-term timeline. Making this overall plan a reality is going to be long after, you know, many of us are in our current positions. So what we're concentrating on now is getting the plan in place, the structure in place, and hopefully working on some of the financing options to make that a reality. But if you have specific questions about any components, we can offer it up and see if Mike has an answer.
It was more just a general question, and it really spurred for me from, I've had several constituents reach out. I know this is obviously not in District 5, but there's a lot of interest from District 5, especially in employment opportunities. And what I have said is those opportunities will be farther down the road, and it will be a mix of private organizations, county, I mean, it's going to be a variety of opportunities, but we're not even close to that point yet. Is that accurate?
Well, largely, yes. I mean, I think there is some potential, again, if we concentrated our efforts into one particular building and we wanted to get that going quickly, there might be some near-term potential there. I'll remind the council that outside this campus that we got from the state, we already had control of some of the buildings on the north side, and we're working on the nonprofit center there and things like that. But you're right, council member, we're going to be partnering with nonprofits, hopefully some institutions and other partners. So to the extent that they bring resources and momentum with them, that increases the potential that we can move more quickly on things. But I've also been in government long enough to know that things take a while, so I don't want to set unrealistic expectations.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you elaborate at all on the partnership with Bowie State, just for our benefit?
I'll, do you want to take this one, Hannah?
Sure. So we signed an MOU with Bowie State over the summer, and right now, what our partnership consists of is primarily internship opportunities for their students and research opportunities as well. They have a historical connection to the campus. Their students have been involved in advocating for different events, you know, planning that has occurred around Crownsville over the past few decades. So it was a really natural fit, and some of these, like the research, some of these are things that have already started before we signed the MOU. But we are part of, another part of the partnership that we signed over the summer was that we would intentionally include them in the rest of the planning for the campus, and we have been, we recently added a member of Bowie State to our advisory committee. And so there's nothing right now, no commitments right now about something like, something larger, like a physical presence on the campus, but that's something that both of us, I think, see as a possibility in the future.
So a few slides back, there was part of the administration complex that sort of looked like it was placing Bowie State there. So that's just visionary?
Yes. These are all concepts in the master plan, yeah.
Okay. So the thought is there could be potential partnerships in all aspects of this in, okay?
Definitely. I think our first focus right now with the master plan has been establishing, going through the public process of establishing the uses and the concepts and figuring out the ones that have a lot of public support, the ones that make sense, given the history and everything else of the campus. But one of the next steps after we have finalized the master plan will be to look at which of the uses we can move forward with sooner rather than later, and part of that will be figuring out which ones make sense to have partners, which partners we have that are ready, like Chris was talking about earlier, to bring resources to the table to make something happen sooner rather than later. So we definitely envision bringing on more partners to this project.
And the slide that showed the potential, the buildings for demolition, is that something that, once this is a fully vetted plan, I mean, would we begin to demol, I mean, even demolition costs money, so is that, would that, is the consultant and the committee going to prioritize where to begin? It's a lot of buildings to demolish.
Do you want to talk about that, Mike?
Sure. Yeah, we do have an initial list of structures. Those are the structures that are just too far gone. It would be a reconstruction as opposed to a renovation, so that'll be the initial phase. And we're working with the Maryland Historic Trust and Planning and Zoning to make sure that they're well-informed, and we'll also be publishing that list to the website for community outreach. So it will be phased, yes. We'll start with those initial structures, then we'll reevaluate some of the other structures that could potentially be removed.
A lot of these buildings are bricks, so do you, if we are planning, as we're planning to demolish some things, would we be trying to retain that brick for reuse and things like that?
It's possible. Yeah, if we did have another use for it, or they could be recycled. Any demolitions that we go through, we have to go through a recycling process for brick or concrete or rebar and separate all the debris as it's being demolished. But anything that has a potential artifact or a component of the structure to be reincorporated into something in the future, yeah, we'd definitely be looking at that.
I think we've exhausted all questions. I really appreciate you taking time today, and I apologize for getting this work session started late. This council may need to reevaluate our start times, as work seems to be late every second Tuesday of the month, but this has been really helpful. It's, I just thought of a quick, oh, Ms. Hummer has a question.
So I know we're looking, we don't have a set timeline now or things. We do have some funds available. So from the council side, as the fiscal authority here, should we be expecting budget requests for Crownsville, you know, in the coming year or two, or is that going to be longer term?
So, great question, council member. I can tell you, right now, as you saw, we still have some funds remaining in, you know, kind of what we have, and those will largely continue to be used on kind of the initial infrastructure needs and things like that. For, you know, once we get the master plan adopted and we have consensus moving forward on the overall vision, as I mentioned, I would expect that we would get some prioritizations of what we want to move forward on first, and at that time, if those priorities require additional funding, then obviously we would need to bring that to the council. I think some of the things that I mentioned previously that we could get started right away, the hiker-biker trails, maybe some of the athletic facilities, you know, we could look at existing funding for that. Some of, like the hiker-biker trails don't cost that much, but if we wanted to build, you know, the running track or the walking track, that would be something. So that's a long way of me saying we're not sure yet and wait and see, but we'll be looking at that question as we put together our budget request for the upcoming year. But the way I look at it, because we still have the bulk of those existing funds remaining, you know, that's probably going to take care of most of our immediate needs for this cycle. But I'll give Mike a chance to overrule me if I said anything wrong.
No, that's accurate. I did compile the budget for this next budget cycle, and we weren't exactly requesting any, we were able to use the additional funds for the foreseeable fiscal year.
Thank you. So now that, what about the general operating budget for security and what we've taken on from the state?
Sure. So there are operating costs largely in, you know, park and recs, because it is a park, and they're now, you know, patrolling the area and doing some things. And then our central services department is doing security, and Ms. Harold can probably speak to the specifics there. And then the DPW costs, the utility costs would be the other thing. So those are currently in our existing operations, but I'll, the big one is maybe central services, so maybe Ms. Harold can weigh in.
Sure. Thank you. So right now, central services in our operating budget is covering security. We have part-time maintenance staff that's part of our facilities management group, and we are paying DPW for the utility, the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And we also, for the wastewater piece, we're pumping and hauling the waste right now, so that is all, that's about $40,000 a month, and that's being covered under our operating budget.
I'm not going to ask any follow-up questions about that part.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think now we have exhausted all of our questions, so, again, I appreciate your time. This was incredibly informative, so thank you very much, and have a great rest of your day. Does anybody need a? We're going to move forward with legislation that we're here to discuss. Good morning, Mr. Hunt.
Good morning.
We're going to start with Bill 83-24 this morning. I believe that is an administration bill. You have the floor when you are all set.
Yes, it is. So Bill 83-24 is an approval of the First Amendment to a farm lease between Anarundel County and Shady Oaks Turf Farm. So Anarundel County is the landlord, Shady Oaks Turf Farm is the tenant. The county and Shady Oaks entered into a lease on October 1st of 2022, so a little over two years ago, and the tenant leased 115 acres of farmland at the Rockhold Creek Farm. And Shady Oaks has entered into leases and subleases at this property with the county going back to 2006. The existing lease between the two parties expired at the end of September. Both parties desire to extend the lease term. This amendment would extend the lease term for 10 additional years, which would commence effective October 1st of 2024 and would expire September 30th, 2034. Rent would be $1,800 for each year, and there are no scheduled rent increases. Both parties have the option to terminate the lease with 120 days' advanced written notice to the other party. We're happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if Mr. Daniels has anything else he wants to add or sums it up.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any other organizations or entities that are leasing a portion of this farm at this point in time?
I'll have to double-check, but not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Follow-up question, if I may?
Of course.
I think we all received an email from the equestrian community with interest from an outstanding proposal from September of 2022 to utilize this farm for passive trail riding of the equestrian community. Are there any plans for that? Is the county executive considering that? What's the status?
Not to my knowledge, so someone did share that email with me last night, so I'm going to follow up on that with Wreckin' Parks and look into it. I know there was a, in a
the Wreckin' Parks plan back in, I believe, 2017, there was a line item in there for equestrian facilities of some sort. And I believe the cost was about $400,000. But obviously, that never made it into a budget from 2017 going forward. So I'll follow up with Wreckin' Parks and find out.
Appreciate that. I mean, I didn't even know the $400,000 figure, getting this later last evening, I believe. So I think we're all trying to figure out the background on that. So that's appreciated.
Understood.
The, so this is, obviously, this is county-owned property, and there, you said 115 acres of it?
115 acres. I believe the total site is just under 400 acres. I think it's 396 acres. I know there is a, I believe there's a historic barn there that Anne Rundell County, Anne Rundell Economic Development Corporation is working on restoring and rehabilitating for, I believe it's Far, 4H?
4H.
Yep.
4H.
Okay.
But that's on another portion of the property, not in the leased portion here.
So just, just a point of interest. I've actually had children, my soccer boys, play tournaments in New Jersey on turf farms. It's absolutely fascinating. Yeah, they just, they'll, they'll farm, they'll clear the turf on one field, but it's acres of, and they just create temporary soccer fields. And the irrigation things are right there. The ball could hit the irrigation thing. I mean, it's fascinating. It's a moneymaker. Anyways, dual use.
Yes.
Sod, turf farm and soccer tournament venue. So the, we all did receive an email, and I did forward it to you for just your, so you were aware. So the full acreage, there's potentially possibility for this other, other uses on the rest of the acreage, I guess. I don't know.
We'll check into that, but my guess would be yes.
Okay, great. Any other, Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. So, you know, the name Shady Oaks Turf Farm probably does indicate the primary use of the lessee, but I'm curious if you're aware of any other uses on the leased property or other parts of the property.
I did talk to the owner about a month ago. He does cultivate some other crops. I can get that information to you.
Okay, we can move on to 84-24, I guess. This is also a county executive, oh no, this is Julie's bill.
Thanks, Chris. This just, currently, we don't have anything in code for exceptions to waive fees, late fees for stormwater projects. And we have run into, in particular, we have some homeowners' associations that perhaps have gone defunct. And when a group is trying to start it back up, they're finding that on some of the community-owned property, they've had some fees. And this is just, now allows us that option that those fees could be waived, late fees and penalties could be waived on any stormwater, backstormwater fees for nonprofit organizations.
Mr. Hunt?
Oh, we're, support this. We're happy to answer any questions. But I do know this can be a problem for HOAs if they come back and have backstormwater fees and don't want community property ending up in tax sale or some sort of complication like that.
Ms. Feedler?
We do have other waivers for late fees, don't we? I think, I feel like-
There is not one. It's, in exploring this for one of my communities, we discovered there was not a waiver for this. That was it. So this just allows for that now. I think this is not going to be a common occurrence, but it is something that's come up. Because we do have, I know Ms. Pickard has had some in her district as well, some older community associations that had common property, and they've gone out of place. And when they try to restart the community property, or they start getting notices that the, that the property could go into default, and now they want to update things. So, but yes, we explored it thoroughly. There was no way currently to have a waiver for any of these.
I think I'm thinking of if there's an error in a water bill, that you get like a one-time waiver. That's what I'm thinking of.
Right. No, this is very specifically the stormwater fees.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Bill 85-24, which is my legislation. My colleagues will remember, I don't know, was it in the spring, that we were tackling a larger, a larger personnel bill, and we ended up carving out for continued discussion the both fire service, police service, retirement plans for lateral recruits. This bill brings back where I think we settled at a two-time multiplier, basically making the split for laterals to bring their pension over with a 50% on them, 50% on the county. I could have misstated that, but I, in, rather, not wanting to rehash the whole debate, but we know that we are still working to recruit laterals. They are an excellent way to reach our sworn officer levels as they are, can get on patrol a lot quicker, and they do not cost as much to train, and they bring that extra experience. So this was a way to try to set us, set ourselves apart and build our, build our police department up to our sworn numbers. Mr. Hunt?
So I have to say, it was Bill 93-24, which was last December. It's hard to believe it was that long ago, because it does feel very recent.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah. But it was last, last winter that we were discussing this. So the way, and this was, so this provision is introduced in Bill 93-24. If you may remember, it allowed for officers to trans, or officers and firefighters to transfer up to five years of service from another jurisdiction when they, if they were coming to Anne Rundell County. And the way it would work is that they would have to purchase that service and pay three times their contribution rate to purchase that service, three times their contribution rate for each year. And then it would be, I believe, amortized over the first five years or first 10 years that they worked here.
They would, they would have to vest in the system, which is 20 years vesting for police and fire plans, and then it would be, yes.
Yep. And so, you know, there was some back and forth, you may remember, with members of the FOP over what cost neutral meant, because there was that discussion in negotiations, in the collective bargaining negotiations, about having the lateral provision be cost neutral to either, and obviously, we interpreted that as cost neutral to the county. They interpreted that as cost neutral to an officer. And so that is how we ended up having that provision stripped out. And we had discussed going to two times that multiplier. And I believe there was an amendment to that, to 93-24, to take it from three times to two times. But that amendment did not pass, and subsequently, that provision was stripped out of the bill. So obviously, you know, recognizing that we have staffing issues in both police, and you just heard a presentation from the fire department, we do view this as a tool that helps incentivize lateral recruits from other jurisdictions to come to Anne Rundell County and fill those critical public safety roles without having to go through, you know, six months of training beforehand. They can be out on the streets working and out responding to fire NEMS calls. But there is a cost to this. And so I do just want to turn it over to Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office briefly, just to explain what the cost is and how it works, because it spreads out over the career of a lateral transfer.
I didn't hear if you support the bill or not.
We are supportive of, you know, anything that will help us increase our numbers in the police and fire department.
So you support Bill 85-24 as drafted?
Understanding that there is a cost to it, yes.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I can walk through the handout if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office. So during the discussion on the last bill, there was some discussion on the fiscal impact and what it would be. So what I've done here is, based on some data from the Office of Personnel, we looked at the last three calendar years of lateral transfers in, and based on what our actuary had given us as an increase in cost, what this represents is basically, you can look at the total fiscal impact, almost on the right-hand side there. It's about $1.1 million each year to bring these in, as we bring in about 10 laterals per year today. So that's assuming, what would that cost us if we had these provisions in place now for the last three years? So that cumulative impact, you can see down at the bottom, is 3.2, 3.3 million dollars that would be to the pension fund. We amortize that over 20 years, so you can divide that by 20. That would be the annual impact. But this is cumulative for those 20 years that we would be paying that into the pension fund as a county contribution for this benefit.
Thank you. This is excellent information. What I don't see is, since we just, I was just attended the 98th graduating class, which was six, six, we just graduated six new recruits. So what I don't see is when we bring on 10 laterals, if those had been new recruits, that cost of training, which does, would then offset this number, correct? I mean, there are two different line items in the spreadsheet, but it is still a savings to the county. Hopefully, we're going to see, with the 70,000 starting pay, we're going to see new recruits, those classes increase. I think our 101st is higher significantly. But we're still playing catch-up to attrition in retirements, even with that higher 24, 26 in the 101st recruit class. So it's a policy choice, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can this chart, with that being said, can this chart be edited to include the cost to train if we had, if they had been new officers?
We can work out an estimate for that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about 85-24? Thank you for your support of 85-24. We'll move on to 86-24, which is, which is an administration bill.
So 86-24 is an extension of the cable franchise agreement. So this is a term some of you may have heard, some of you may not. But basically, Star Power Communications, Comcast, and Verizon all have to have agreements with the county to operate in the county, providing cable and internet service. And so this is an amendment to the current cable franchise agreement with those three providers. So we entered into an original agreement in December, on December 1st, 2006, which had an initial term of 15 years. This is governed, this process is governed by federal law and state code regarding the submission of proposals by cable providers and for the negotiations of the terms and conditions of renewal between the cable providers and the carriers. So OIT has been working over the past couple of years on these negotiations. However, they have not completed those negotiations prior to the expiration of the current agreement. So this bill approves the extensions of the current franchise agreements through December 31st of 2026, which will allow the county and the three cable franchises, three cable companies to finish their negotiations. I do have John Walczko here from the Office of Information Technology, who was heavily involved in these, who can hopefully provide a better explanation than I did and answer any questions.
Did you want to add anything?
No, that pretty much covers it. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions regarding 86-24 this morning? Thank you for being here. Thank you for helping with our IT support this morning as well. All right, we'll move along to 87-24. This is also a county executive bill.
Yes, so Bill 87-24 is for the Severn Grove Special Community Benefits District. So this bill makes a supplementary appropriation of funds in the amount of $24,010.33, which is in the community-held fund balance of Severn Grove SCBD. So they already have this money in their account. The Severn Grove Improvement Association, which administers these funds, has requested this additional appropriation to complete renovations for their community-owned clubhouse. It is a little time-sensitive. I guess they have a failing septic system at that community-owned clubhouse, which is part of the reason they are requesting this supplementary appropriation, additional appropriation.
Do we have any questions about 87-24?
Madam Chair?
Just fixing failing septic systems is always good.
Sounds like it. Ms. Feedler?
I just want to say thank you to Janaye, who's here this morning. She was incredibly helpful on a previous SCBD bill. She knows her stuff. Thank you.
I'll just put in a plug as well. If you haven't taken a look yet at the SCBD webpage that Janaye was able to put together, have a look. That is very helpful and very informative.
I did peruse it. I don't know that I have any SCBDs in my district, but I was like, oh, okay. Fantastic. Thank you for being here this morning. 88-24. This is also your bill, Mr. Hunt?
Yes. So Bill 88-24 authorizes the refunding of special tax bonds that were previously issued for the villages at Two Rivers. The goal of this refunding process is to capitalize on savings from reducing borrowing costs. So this reduction in borrowing expenses will translate into lower special tax rates, which will benefit property owners within the Two Rivers Special Taxing District by reducing the amount applied to their property tax bill. So it will do, accomplish a couple of goals. It will reduce the debt service costs. Goal of the refinancing is for the county to secure a lower interest rate, which will result in decreased debt service costs, which will ultimately benefit the taxpayers within the villages at Two Rivers who are county residents. It will also provide a lower interest rate that reduces the annual payments needed to service these bonds, which will result in some significant long-term savings. These lower taxes that will result from the refinancing will make these properties more attractive to potential buyers, likely increasing property values within the villages at Two Rivers Special Taxing District. These higher property values obviously result in increased property tax revenues ultimately, which do benefit the county. And it also reduces the default risk. So lower annual payments will help prevent default situations by making these special taxes more manageable for the property owners. I do have some folks from the Office of Finance here. Answer any questions.
Ms. Feedler?
I don't think I've seen one of these in my six years on the council. This doesn't happen very often. Is that correct?
Good morning, Billy Penley, Office of Finance. No, the last refinance was back in approximately 2012.
I thought so. Thank you.
Yeah, that, reading all of these, all of this information on the page, it's sort of what struck me, is they're refinancing, basically, like you would refinance your own mortgage.
Exactly. And that's the example how I've described this legislation to people. It's, you know, there was the benefit of the cost to do the refinance, and the property owners will see that on their property tax bill.
Okay. Any other questions on 88-24? Okay, we'll move forward to 89-24. Current expense budget, the Board of Education supplementary appropriation. Thank you for being so patient, Mr. Stansky. You've got some excellent presentations today, just for your general- You've got some excellent presentations today, just for your general knowledge, so.
Bill 8924 is to amend the current expense budget to provide an additional appropriation for the Board of Education. The Board has requested this supplementary appropriation of unrestricted, unappropriated fund balance in a total amount of $15,608,13, $15,608,013. Funds are being appropriated to different categories within the Board's budget as required by state law, which are in the bill. Ford has indicated that the funds will be used for an enterprise resource planning software upgrade, Chromebook repairs, HVAC preventative maintenance, implementation of a learning management system, implementation of transportation routing software, a blueprint mandated carryover of unspent career counseling funds, cloud migration of a student information system, materials and transportation for robotics teams and clubs, and support for breakfast-lunch programs not located at a school. I do have Mr. Stansky here, can he answer any questions about the bill?
Good morning.
Good morning. I think Mr. Hunt went over that very well. And again, happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the administration, the 8.8 million, can you just discuss that a little further? It looks like software is the primary?
Yeah, so it's two pieces of software upgrades. One is our, two, it's really both our major systems. First is our ERP system, which is payroll benefits, human resources, and budgeting. We're entering in a multi-year upgrade of that system. Biggest thing is obviously moving it to the cloud and upgrading all the various features. We're looking at an implementation date of April of 2026. So this will be a multi-year phase, and that's 8.6 million. And then the other is our student information system, 256,000. That is simply moving that from a hosted, we currently host that onsite, that data, and we are moving that to the cloud as well, for both for increased processing time as well as increased security.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yes. What would happen if you were not to make that upgrade?
For which one?
For the enterprise resource.
Yeah, so that, you know, we essentially have two years left of support, and the vendor has indicated we could continue to use the product, but it would go unsupported.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
The Chromebook repairs, 2 million. What kind of, can you just go into details on that a little bit? I mean, I know what a Chromebook repair is, but are we repairing old Chromebooks? What are we?
So we went through an extensive inventory process this summer, where we called back all, you know, 85,000 Chromebooks that were issued to students during the pandemic. And those Chromebooks came back in varying conditions. And so some, we were beyond repair and had to dispose of and replace. Some were in perfectly fine condition, were ready to be used, and some were damaged. But was, the most cost-effective way was to repair those devices. And so this is essentially funding that we're going, that we are needed to continue the repair of those devices.
I cannot imagine doing an inventory on all of those Chromebooks.
Yeah, there is.
It must have taken some time.
It was, yes, absolutely. And so we had a combination of a contract, and that contractor hired our students this summer to help with that inventory. We have over 100,000 all in, on top of the, including the 85 I mentioned. But yeah, so this is, this is our funding we'll need to get those devices back up and running.
I could keep going, but I see other lights, so I'll pause.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just so I'm following, this is not a transfer bill. This is a supplementary appropriation bill, where the county is saying, we have $15.6 million in the general fund that we are moving over to the Board of Education that we've not previously sent?
No, this is, the Board of Education requesting use its own fund balance.
Got you, okay.
To do this.
I misunderstood that, so thank you for clarifying. Because I was sitting there going, we had $15.6 million, what are we doing?
We would have certainly called you ahead of time if we needed an additional $15 million of county appropriation.
I was not tracking on that, so thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay.
Ms. Hammer.
I just want to say, when we talk about that they inspected all the Chromebooks, and you know, some of them are normal accents you would think of, but some of my favorites are that, for instance, the Chromebooks that came back from some of our little ones that Play-Doh had been put in all of the keyboards and things like that. So that's kind, some of the things they found as the Chromebooks came back.
Yeah, my youngest had his Chromebook from fourth grade, turned it in in eighth grade. It was in working condition, and he may have not turned in the cord. But that was about it. We were good stewards of your equipment.
We appreciate that.
That team pickered. Are there any, oh, Ms. Feedler.
Yeah, I mean, I could go down and ask about every single bullet point, but one that stood out was the transportation routing software implementation. Didn't we just do transportation routing software in the last few years?
It was pre-pandemic, I think 2016 or 2017 was when the software was first procured. We did get notified by the vendor that they are no longer supporting, they're actually moving away from the business of transportation routing. And so we will be required to update that. We have an RFB out right now and hoping to procure that here after this transfer is adopted.
Okay, but we already had, you already had it in the budget under the previous.
The ongoing cost, but this would be one-time startup cost to start up the new software.
Understood, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, now that I've recalibrated and I understand where I'm asking questions from, thank you. What is the Board's current fund balance in total? Because obviously, this is 15.6, what's the total?
So we ended the year general fund at 38, just over $38 million.
Okay.
Mr. Volkey, 15 of that was already appropriated in the budget, and now we're asking for this other 15.6 to be appropriated.
So if you deploy this, you'll have sub $8 million, somewhere around there.
Yeah.
Okay. And do you anticipate that with this appropriation, that you have any other unexpected funding that you're going to need to cover? That this will impact in some way? Like, I guess you all are doing projections all the time, I know that. But I guess my question just is, if we do this and we appropriate this $15.6 million, knowing that you could probably stretch the software a little longer, but it would not be preferable to do that, what impacts does that have in the upcoming budget when we get into next year? And what you guys are looking for in terms of funding and other ways to deploy money? Can you speak to that more broadly?
Yeah, I mean, I think, one, I think I've, you know, in my time doing this, I've heard from you all on the council that we need to be bringing more of these, right? That typically, we do a second quarter and fourth quarter, and then that fourth quarter bill tends to be bigger and later in the year. So, one, it was kind of a recognition of when we foresee things that are needed to come to you earlier.
Okay.
So that was, that was, you know, genesis number one. Genesis number two was, you know, it was an opportunity for us to really do some badly-needed upgrades around our IT infrastructure without having to come and ask for a county appropriation that is annual, right? Because this, the funding we're asking for is really the one-time funding needed. I will say, right, we're doing this without knowing when the winter will come, right? And so there's always that possibility hanging out there, but I, you know.
As it's 75 degrees in November, right?
Correct.
I hear you.
Yeah, right, yeah, but you're right, it's Maryland, so you never know. But I will say, for some of the software upgrade, you'll see in the '26 budget, some in the '27 budget, we will have ongoing costs. For instance, our learning management system upgrade. Our current learning management system is still funded through ESAR, right? And so we have money in this request to start that upgrade process, but there is going to be an annual component to it that is going to be requested in the '26 budget.
Okay.
But we tried, for the most part, to keep whatever we are using here, because it is additional fund balance to one-time use. But I think there will be some occasions, the learning management system being the most obvious, where we might need some recurring appropriation around that.
Okay, and I know this is early, and if you don't have an answer, I get that. But do you have a sense of what that recurring obligation would be? You're putting 630,000 into it now as sort of a down payment. Do you see that as a consistent annual recurring amount?
It'll probably, it'll actually be a little bit higher. Our current obligation for our current learning management system is about 1.2 million.
Okay, and you think it'll be consistent with that?
It may be a little bit higher. Maybe we need some training costs in the first year, right?
Okay.
Since it'll be a brand-new system.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodgian.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for choosing the different things that you did. I know these, like, aren't necessarily the most exciting ways to spend money, but I think they're all, like, you've chosen really important priorities that are, that will really benefit the county and the school system. So just wanted to give you a shout-out.
Thanks.
So the one, one of the things that speaks to me in this list is the $1 million for equipment and supplies for middle school athletics. I realize I'm putting you on the spot, but are you at any, are you able to give any sort of update on the middle school athletics? Because I'm excited about middle school.
We all are. I, to be honest, Miss Figur, I have not been intimately involved in that. I know the spring will be the first go at it. And I believe, I believe track and field will be the first sport that we'll be instituting amongst others.
Oh, track and field?
I believe so.
Okay.
Maybe not, I don't.
Mr. Heiser is making a motion here.
Here we go. Get the guy who knows.
I just know the answer to this one question, so it's, I know it's boys and girls soccer.
Fiddles, which you're excited about, that's good.
I'm excited.
Absolutely.
If you need any assistant coaches, I've been on the sidelines for a lot of soccer games. And I, my kids' coaches will tell you that I'm very annoying. Well, that's an excellent way to start. How would we start track and field without a track and field at middle schools? How would that, what does that look like?
Well, that's why it's not this year. It is the following year. I do know that our Office of Athletics has a pretty robust plan in terms of rolling these out, and I think it's smart to start with the field sports first and get momentum, and then all of the operational aspects and even capital needs that you're talking about. But we've, as you know, particularly in the county, we have a really good relationship with Rack and Park, which we're really pleased about, and I know they're happy about this, too. We've worked out the times as well, which is a really important component of it, so that no one loses programming.
Just, I think, I think the council, I can't speak for everybody, but I do think there is enthusiasm around middle school athletics for a whole host of reasons. So it might be something that we want to invite y'all to talk about at a future opportunity, and how it, general nodding, general nodding? Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you. I'm very excited about it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we, as parents, bring our parental experiences to the table here, so I have to give a shout-out to track and field. I will be reaching out to make sure that that stays on your radar, as you know that there are not a lot of young programs out there.
Yeah, no, it's serious. I would like my high schooler to look into track and field, but it's not something he knows anything, he's never had an opportunity, so he's not really feeling comfortable. So if that had started in some real way in middle school, maybe that we could grow those programs, because those individual sports are also very rewarding for students.
Ms. Rodgian.
I'm just in a shout-out mood. I don't know how many alerts I got over the weekend that our teams were winning state championships, so way to go AACPS and all of our athletics.
It was a good weekend, yeah, absolutely.
None of my children's teams won, so we'll, we'll work on that, we'll work on that. Are we good on Bill 8924? We've exhausted all questions. Well, again, apologies for starting late, and thank you for your patience as you were at the, sort of the end of the list here. We'll move on to 90-24. This is a county executive bill.
Certainly, so Bill 9024 is an amendment to the capital budget to recognize various state grants and miscellaneous funds that have been received during this fiscal year. I won't read all the project numbers, that will get a little tiring. I do believe they are in the fiscal note, but just, I'll run through them and what they are. So the bill make, it transfers funding sources from general county bonds to other state grants for appropriated funds in the WBNA Trail Capital Project and the Blue Water Milestone Supps Capital Project to account for grants that have been received during FY '25. It also makes supplementary appropriations of funds in the other state grants funding source for the Streetlight Conversion Capital Project, the New Traffic Signals Capital Project, the Sustainability Initiatives Capital Project, Old Mill Middle School North Capital Project, the Building Systems Renovation Capital Project, and the School Bus Replacement Capital Project. These supplementary appropriations recognize grant funding that's become available for these, this fiscal year. It also makes a supplementary appropriation of funds relating to a federal tax credit in the miscellaneous funding source for the Board of Education's Sustainability Initiatives Capital Project. I do have Bill Heiser and Kyle Roof from AACPS here to answer any questions. And Naomi from the Budget Office.
Do we have any questions about Bill 90-24? Well, I'll just ask, is it, can you give us a quick, or me, a quick update on the progress of the Old Mill Master Plan? What's happening at Patriots Lane, real quick?
So right now, we are actively working on Cat North, which during the summer, we tore down the South Tower for Old Mill South. Old Mill South was relocated to the new middle school on Old Mill Boulevard. And we are in the final stages of design for Old Mill High School. We anticipate that to be bid early next calendar year. And then that would open in 2028. And then, at the same time, a year from now, we're going to be looking at Old Mill North Middle School, which will be located on the current Cat North property. And that would also open in 2028. Keep all those chess pieces.
Yeah, it's, we are, my team, Chris and I are intimately involved in this, and I still can't keep it straight. So the Old Mill, the new Old Mill High School, are we looking at the same prototype of Crofton and Severn Run?
Correct, they'll be very similar to the site, but yes.
And are we putting that, we're building that on the current property?
Yeah, current property, if you're familiar with it, it's where the baseball softball fields are. Along that road, we built at the construction of Rippling Woods Elementary School.
Right, mm-hmm. Okay, so I think we're going to have to figure out a way to reward our current occupants of that building, both staff and students and families. There'll be, they'll end up having to relocate some athletics, some parking, probably.
Yeah, with the, with the two schools that are operating on campus, along with the two construction projects, it's going to be very condensed. Athletics will likely need to be moved, for at least the outdoor activities.
We did that at Severna Park, didn't we?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So other communities have had to suffer a little bit. It's not just us. The price of progress, well, I appreciate that update. Does anybody have any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
90, we'll move on to 9124. Oh, Ms. Feedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this issue was brought to me by a constituent who loves animals, has three dogs of her own, and wanted to offer an opportunity for friends to leave their dog in her care, dogs that don't typically do well in the larger commercial settings, or for a homeowner, or, sorry, a pet owner that may want an overnight stay to be more in a home environment. But when she applied to get the appropriate paperwork for the county, even though you can have one to four dogs as a private property owner, if you are opening a pet care business, which she was trying to do all of the right things, you can, you have to have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, which she did not have. So it just seemed like a discrepancy that she could have four if they were her own, but she could not have the business if her lot size was a certain square footage. So this removes that square feet or greater language in 1810-139.
Mr. Hunt, did the administration have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess. So I guess our concern with the bill is that there's no minimum lot size for a pet care business, understanding that, you know, 20,000 is the current threshold. If you were lowering it to, like, 15,000 or 17,500 or something, I think we'd be more comfortable with it, but I do recognize having, you know, a pet care business in a residential neighborhood, if you have dogs outside during the day, it can be disruptive to the neighbors. So that's our concern with it.
Madam Chair, ma'am?
Of course.
I understand that concern, however, that, that individual could have four dogs who are her own pets that are outside, and there is no minimum lot require, or size requirement.
That's, excuse me, that's correct, Ms. Fiedler. In general, a property can have, with a 20,000-square-foot lot, you could have no more than four dogs, and then it varies by different type. With a pet care business, though, because there's potentially different, different pets, different dogs there on different days of the week, it's, it seems, we think that having a minimum lot size safeguard there is probably a good idea, because we do get some complaints about outdoor pets fairly frequently in the zoning office. So I think we would agree with Mr. Hunt. We might feel better if you kept some minimum lot size for a pet care business, even if it were 15,000 square feet instead of 20,000. That might still be a good idea.
May I?
Of course.
I do appreciate that feedback. I think, I'm thinking as a homeowner who has, I mean, I wouldn't want to have a business and have a dog that was an issue in my home, not only for my other family members, but my other own dogs, whether it be two dogs or one dog. I think for me, it's just, it seems just unfair to say you can have four dogs of your own, but you can't have four dogs as an overnight stay for, you know, dogs that are having issues that don't do very well. I think we're seeing that a lot in the rescue arena. Those dogs, because they are in commercial-like kennels while they're in rescue care, tend to not do as well in commercial kennels, and that has created a problem with pet owners who want to still travel and want to still do things in their daily life, and now they're almost held captive, and they're looking for other alternatives to pet care that, that work for their animal, and there's not a lot out there. So I think that this would give those opportunities. But I do appreciate the feedback, and I'll think on that.
Ms. Hummer.
What is the average lot size for, say, a townhouse?
I'm not sure I could tell you that.
Or the, or the minimum, or the, I don't know, the maximum. I'm just thinking, when we say 15,000 square feet, would that be?
That's a big lot.
That would be a big lot for a townhouse.
That would typically not be a townhouse lot.
Okay, so we're, so, all right, so I'm just thinking, you know, I'm thinking of a townhouse, if you're boarding animals in there, that's a little yard to have four dogs in, to have, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will add that the, the code section that Ms. Fiedler's referencing is the home occupations, and they are conditional use in all the residential districts, but with the minimum lot size currently of 20,000 square feet.
So this says the dog, in a home occupation, there would have to be a fenced area. So townhomes often don't have a fenced yard.
But some do. I mean, I've lived in a townhouse with a fenced backyard.
So that would be a requirement, fenced area.
I actually have a follow-up question on my envelope.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
So a constituent reached out about the fact that we don't define pet care business in the code. I felt that it was almost self-explanatory in its title. Is there a reason that you know of that there is not a definition? I think a pet care business is caring for a pet.
No, I don't know of a specific reason that there's not a definition in the code.
Okay.
I'm sure one could be added as part of the bill if, if you think there's a need.
That's the question of the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? We ready to move on? Okay, let's, I think this is our last bill, 9224. Oh, this is. Who wants to take the lead on 9224?
Alphabetical order?
Sure.
The lead sponsor is not here. So essentially, this bill removes the required bag fee and penalties associated with the bag fee and lifts the limitation on giveaways. That's all it does. Businesses do not have to stop charging a fee, but this removes a requirement.
Would the administration like to weigh in on Bill 9224?
Sure, Madam Chair. So I, I understand the, the goal of this legislation. I think we have a concern about removing the fee, because, one, I think removing the fee might give people an incentive to use more paper bags, right? If the, you know, the line item isn't on the receipt, they'll just start using paper bags, which, on a bag-to-bag basis, actually have more of an environmental impact than even plastic bags, and I think that, you know, that cost will still be passed on to the consumer. And one thing I recall, just from when, so when the state legislation, or they, when the state was trying to pass legislation a few years ago, the charge for the bag as a line item was intended to get support among retailers and people who utilize bags in their businesses, just so that it could be clearly delineated that, you know, the, the cost of the bag was not being passed on to the consumer through the cost of what they were purchasing, but rather as a separate line item for the bag, if that makes sense. So they, they wanted to make it clear that retailers were not, you know, inflating their prices to accomplish the, or to cover the cost of the bags. So I think that's, that is one goal of having a separate line item charge on the receipts.
Ms. Fiedler.
I completely understand that perspective. I think, two things. So I received an email from a member of the Sierra Club, or maybe they're not a member. Either way, the data that was shared was really positive in the behavior change since the bag, the Bring Your Own Bag Act went into effect. I don't know that, I don't think that people will go back just because the fee is removed. I think when we were talking about the fee on that bill, it was to incentivize changing in behaviors, and we see that change has taken place. I've heard from constituents who are elderly and unable to go to grocery stores, grocery stores primarily are the, the big ones, that are getting more bags in their, paper bags in their delivery, and so that aspect of their grocery bill is increasing, and they don't have an option to bring their own because it's delivery. They can't tell the grocery store, "Bring it in a box." So they're kind of stuck, and they're on a limited income. The other regular that I, I hear is just folks who forget, or folks who are in a certain circumstance, and it does add up over time, and that was the reason for me to hop on to the bill, although, again, I'm not the lead sponsor.
Any other questions? I seem to recall the Retailers Association was very clear on the charge, so that it didn't set retailers with larger margins that could absorb the cost ahead of smaller businesses, and it was clear that they were using it to offset the cost of the change in material. I seem, that was one of the other aspects of the, the 10-cent fee. Lots of jurisdictions do this differently. I've not heard a single complaint about the 10-cent fee, actually, so. Mr. Volkey.
I hear it frequently, and I also hear it, you know, just, I hear it from a lot of people, I do. I still get emails about it, believe it or not. I was confronted by somebody in an event I was at recently, like, "I can't believe you voted for that, bring-your-own-bag ban," or whatever. And I said, "That's not what it is," and I explained it to them, but I can tell you that there are still a lot of people. And by, I think that this was a good piece of legislation that we did, and I think it was good from the standpoint of the behavior modification, which the Sierra Club sort of did this informal modeling or, or survey, I think they referred to it as, where they, like, watched behavior coming out of grocery stores, and they certainly saw people are using less. Now, obviously, they're going to use less. Plastic bags aren't an option anymore, so clearly, there's going to be a change in behavior. But what was most exciting about it is, there's a significant increase in the number of people who are bringing their own bags, which is, I believe, what kind of the main thrust of this was. So at this point, retailers have had a year, they've had the ability to adjust to this new price that they have to deal with in terms of having these bags, and we delayed it for eight months, six months, something like that, the first year, to allow them to get through that initial year. So all in, there's been an 18-month, more or less, run period where they can look at these costs, factor them into their business model, and say, "How are we going to do this?" So with that, I think that it does make sense that, at this point, we say, "We have accomplished the behavioral modification that we wanted to have, now let's take away that fee, and let's see if we continue to have that." I think we will, because people have adjusted. I talked to a lot of people who say, you know, "They were bringing these bags before, so this has only helped them to remember to do it going forward."
Has anybody, I have not, I really haven't, this is not clearly an issue from my constituents, but I haven't, I also haven't had any retailers asking for the fee to be removed, but, Ms. Rodbien.
I think we'll probably have a further conversation about this when the public hearing comes up, but obviously, as, you know, the lead sponsor of this bill initially, you know, we, we have had behavior change, but I don't know why we would expect not to have additional behavior change if we change the law. We'll then be incentivizing folks to just take free paper bags and be less diligent about remembering to bring their reusable bags for when they could possibly just carry their items, or, you know, if they carry, you know, a lot of women could, men too, carry bags, and they can put things in a bag that they, you know, that they just carry with them all the time. I don't know why we would expect behavior not to change again if we kind of undo what we did to get the behavior that we are seeing, that Sierra reported. So I obviously will oppose this.
Ms. Fiedler.
This is purely anecdotal. The paper bags are terrible. I can fit three times as much in my reusable bag, so I think there's a benefit. I'm just saying that I think the people who have transitioned, there is a benefit to using the reusable bags, they're pretty durable, they're washable, you can't wash paper bags, and they tend, the handles are just breaking, and that's one thing my constituents who have reached out have said, is that, "We're getting these bags, I pick them up off of my porch, and they're ripping and falling apart." So, that's all.
Any other questions regarding 92-24? Seeing none, that was our last bill. Did y'all want to add anything to the, since you've waited here all day? Excellent. Thank you. Okay, well, I think that we've covered a lot. Are there any other items any council member would like to discuss at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m.